Here.
Louie Williams.
Here.
Iowa.
Here.
Mark Camp.
Here.
Lynn Lewis.
Would you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bring us to item C is we have a presentation of a letter of commendation by Chief Gibson to Moore resident Mercedes Bristow. Chief?
Thank you Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, Council, excuse me. Make it a little easier. In police work, we get to recognize heroic actions on a routine basis. Every day, police officers step into dangerous situations that are unstable and somewhat out of control. Tonight, it is with great excitement that I get to recognize members of our community as heroes. I would like to call up before the Vice Mayor and Council Ms. Mercedes Bristow and Mr. Mark Taylor. Please step up here with me. A well-known mantra of the city of Moore that the police department absolutely recognizes and that our community identifies with is the statement, "Together, we are more strong." The actions of these two members of our community embody this statement and remind me of Sir Robert Peel's words. Known as the father of modern policing from 1829, Sir Robert Peel has nine principles on policing, and his seventh has always been my favorite. And I'm going to read that. Principle seven says, "The police," from 1829, "the police are to maintain at all times a relationship with the public that gives reality to the historic tradition that the police are the public and the public are the police." The police being only members of the public who are paid to give full-time attention to the duties which are incumbent upon every citizen in the interest of community welfare and existence. This 1829 statement falls right in line with our motto of "Together, we are more strong." So now, I would like to recognize Ms. Bristow and Mr. Taylor for their actions in October. We're going to present them certificates. These certificates, the Moore Police Department Letter of Commendation to Ms. Mercedes Bristow and Mr. Mark Taylor. This letter of commendation is presented by the Chief of Police in recognition of your remarkable actions on October 24th, 2020. At approximately 2:45, you witnessed a woman in crisis, positioned up on the top of the Northwest 12th Street overpass, poised to potentially take a fatal leap into a busy interstate. Despite the woman being a stranger to you, you intervened and contacted her, clinging to her, preventing a tragedy. Your calm presence and reassuring voice soothed the woman's anxiety, especially once uniformed officers arrived. Thanks to your compassion and selflessness, the woman was safely brought down and able to receive appropriate mental health resources. A part of what makes our community here in Moore so special is having people like you in it. Thank you. In recognition of your outstanding service to a person in need and to the city of Moore, I am happy to present you with this letter of commendation. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to end in reminding us by saying, in a time where our culture often tells us that during a time of crisis, the thing to do is to pull out your cell phone and start videoing it, or just simply drive on by, it's not my business. These two people chose to step up and answer a higher calling and help a person who was hurt. So on behalf of the Moore Police Department, myself and the city of Moore, we honestly thank you and sincerely thank you for your service that day and thank you for saving a life that day. So thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, if anybody had any experience with it. I just didn't want to give it off.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You said it well, Chief. Thank you both.
Can I say one quick thing?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say that I think we were both very comforted when the police showed up and we could see right away, at least I could, that they were highly trained and knew what to do in that situation. Where I know in our circumstances and kind of the culture right now, there's a pushback against policing and that they might not be the most empathetic. And I did not experience that. The first officer on the scene, right away, she said her name was Officer Cooper, but then she immediately said her first name. She knew in that situation she needed to become a person rather than just a authority figure. And then she went right through the steps of suicide questioning. Knew she was trained, she knew what she was doing. So we thank you for supporting the police department to have people highly trained like that. So regular citizens like us can help out, but then call people who know what's really going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always encouraging to hear such positive news. Thank you again. I do see we have some special visitors in our crowd tonight. Leadership Moore is here, and Adam Webb also serves, is serving in this class. Adam, would you like to say?
Yeah, I just want to thank Leadership Moore for being here. It's a great program. I encourage everyone to take a look at that through our Chamber of Commerce if you want to learn about our city and ways to be involved. I'm lucky enough to meet some fantastic people along the way. So thank you guys for being here tonight at the meeting.
I did hear the conversation, our city manager, Brooks Mitchell, was in the 2018 class, and he told me that his was much better than the 2020.
Y'all have a ways to go.
And that would bring us to our consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held November 2nd, 2020. Receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held September 9th, 2020. Receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held October 6th, 2020. Accept a 10-foot temporary construction easement and a 17-foot permanent utility easement from Patrick and Deanna Myers for construction of a sanitary sewer force main. Item B is accept a temporary workspace easement from the Dotson Living Trust, Jake Tullis, Jeff Tullis, Betty Jane Tullis, and Jeannie Zachary for construction of the southeast lift station improvements. Item F, accept a permanent utility easement from Michael R. Odell and Lori G. Pratt Odell, parcel 16.1, for construction and maintenance of the southeast 4th Street Railroad underpass project. And item G is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020, 2021 in the amount of $1,955,159.47. Motion to approve a second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item three. Consider adopting resolution number 97420, calling for and setting the dates for the municipal elections for the year 2021 as provided in the city charter specifying the officers to be elected, providing for the qualifications of candidates, designating which offices will be filed by ward, providing for nonpartisan election, providing for residency requirements, directing that a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the Secretary of Cleveland County Election Board as required by state law, and providing that a copy of resolution be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city.
Mayor and Council, this item just calls for the election for the seats that will expire in 2021 in wards 1, 2, and 3.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Motion passes. Item number four. Consider approval of FY 2021 budget supplement to budget additional funds and related expenses in the special revenue fund finance.
Vice Mayor and Council, this agenda item is a companion to agenda item number six for the police department. We are requesting approval to budget additional funds to be received from Norman Regional Hospital and to budget the associated purchase of software to upgrade our dispatch system. This will allow the city to provide 911 and non-emergency dispatch services to Norman Regional Hospital's ambulance service. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
And just so I'm clear, right now, the ambulance, Mstat, is dispatched from another location other than our dispatch center?
Yes, sir. Chief may be able to answer.
They have their own.
Yes, Vice Mayor, the current contract that Norman Regional Hospital has is with Leifnit. And so we receive the 911 call and we send the fire department. And then we transfer that call to Leifnit, who's a third party that they contract through, who then in turn dispatches the ambulance service. What should be seen before you tonight, we'll take that part out of it. So when the 911 call comes into our communication center, we will dispatch both fire and ambulance. So we'll have a dramatic increase in our response.
Absolutely.
Great, that's very good. Thank you, Chief. Motion to approve, second. We've had a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Motion passes. Item number five is consider approval of an annual contract with Norman Regional Hospital Authority doing business as Mstat for the city to provide emergency medical 911 and non-emergency dispatch services. In exchange for said services, Mstat will pay the city approximately $23,422.25 per calendar quarter.
Mayor and Council, we recommend approval on this item. Actually, Captain W is in the crowd with Leadership Moore negotiated with Norman Regional Hospital. This particular item is for salary and benefits for two communications officers that will be helping the increased workload, which will segue off of the software purchase.
Make a motion to approve, second.
We've had a motion and a second. And we've got plenty of space in dispatch for two more?
Absolutely, Mayor. We have a beautiful facility, as you well know, and it was built with expansion in mind. And so we could actually, even with this addition, we could still handle one to two more additional radio positions and up to five more call taker positions if we built out to future expansion. So this will not impact anything facilities-wise.
Okay, great, thank you. We had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item carries, thank you. Item number six, consider authorizing the purchase of emergency medical dispatch software in the amount of $91,155 from Priority Dispatch as a sole source provider to be reimbursed by Norman Regional Hospital Authority doing business as Mstat in the first quarter of 2021.
Mayor and Council, we recommend approval. This correlates back to item four, that is a software purchase that will be reimbursed by Norman Regional Hospital.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we had a motion and a second. Other discussion, would you call for the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark? Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item carries. Item number seven, consider authorizing the purchase of 10 ticket riders from Tyler Technologies doing business as Brazos in the amount of $25,842 as a sole source provider.
Mayor and Council, I didn't see that one on there, sorry. This is just a standard, pre-budgeted purchase to maintain our inventory. This is a piece of technology that obviously comes to a service life, and this is just going to replace 10 of our existing infrastructure and inventory. So we would recommend approval.
Just quickly while you're here, and since related to traffic, how's the traffic unit working?
So as I explained to groups earlier, Mayor, it's working out tremendously. And what we like to reiterate anytime we talk about the traffic unit is that it is not a revenue generator or source of revenue for the city. It is strictly focused on traffic safety, reducing accidents, and increasing compliance with traffic safety laws. There can sometimes be perceptions out there that cities seek citations for revenue purposes. That could be nothing further from the truth here in the city of Moore. It's strictly in response to residents' concerns of traffic safety and to increase traffic safety in Moore. It's working out spectacular, and it also frees up district cars to take higher priority calls.
Okay, thank you very much. Back to the item seven, how many of those ticket riders do we currently have?
I think we have about 30. Captain W, maybe 30, 40, 40, I'm sorry.
Okay, very good, thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we had a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item carries. Number eight is consider acceptance of a quote from Decra Light in the amount of $18,981.06 for the purchase of a 24-foot Sepoyia Collection Christmas tree and decoration package for the station.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is for a Christmas tree that will be enhancing the decoration package that is already there. We do not have a Christmas tree. This is an artificial tree. It's 24-foot height, and right now, it will be placed on the berm to the south of the amphitheater for picture-taking and various other holiday activities.
Thank you for doing this. I know the citizens will enjoy this for several years to come.
Many years. It's artificial, so it will last. The decorations are kept very carefully stored until needed, and then they're brought out and they look new, you know. They're kept very well.
A new spot for your selfies.
That's what, yes, it'll be perfect.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So is this a budgeted item?
I don't believe it is.
This is just part of the, there's a line item for things like this in the parks budgets. It wasn't identified specifically that these are for things that come out.
As long as we've got the money, we can appropriate it for it. Thank you. We had a motion, did we have a second?
Yeah.
Any second?
Yeah.
Call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item carries. Bring us to item nine. Consider adopting resolution number 97520, authorizing the city of Moore to submit an application to the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, for the Clean Air Grant and Public Sector Fleets Capital Planning and Resilience.
Vice Mayor and Council, the city has received several Clean Air Grants from ACOG over the past few years. This grant application would fund the cost of converting a new grapple truck to CNG. Grapple trucks are used for the big trash pickups. And the total amount of the grant request is $32,755. This application is due this Friday on the 20th, and we should receive notification of award in January of 2021. And the grapple truck is a budgeted item this year.
Thank you. Any, no questions? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item carries. Item 10, consider approval of a contract with Meachack and Associates for the completion of a letter of map revision for the Little River Park and Drainage Channel.
Vice Mayor and Council, currently the site for the CDBGDR funded project, The Curve, is shown to be in the floodplain according to the current FEMA flood maps. The channel and pond improvements completed on the south end of Little River Park removed the site from the floodplain. The completion and approval of the letter of map revision will update the FEMA maps to show this site now out of the floodplain. A request for qualifications was solicited on October 9th, and two responses were submitted on October 23rd. Staff reviewed and scored the two responses, and Meachack and Associates received the highest score. The fee for the completion of the letter of map revision will not exceed $38,417.90. It will be funded with CDBGDR funds, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Motion to approve. We had a motion and a second. That's all right, and I'll call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item carries. Item number 11. Consider approval of a contract with SJ Innovations LLC doing business as computer system designers to provide security officers for the station recreation and aquatic facility.
Vice Mayor and Council, this was the company that approved the hourly rate for at the last meeting in October, and we've now since finalized the contract. It's been reviewed by the Parks Department, the city attorney, and recommend approval.
I was reading through that, and I do have just one quick question. I've noticed in the contract that it has specified officers, clean certified officers from the city of Moore and Cleveland County. Is there, are we, we're confident that within those two agencies, there will be enough? Should we, are there other qualified officers out there from the city and other departments? Is there a reason that we're limiting it to those two agencies?
Well, I'm sure that others could be used if need be. But in the discussion, in the discussion with going this direction, it was made very clear that we need to be sure that there are available officers to be able to man those shifts and that we not have any shifts unmanned. So I feel confident that we have enough people to do this.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? No?
Make a motion to approve, second.
Second.
A motion, we've had a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item carries. Item number 12, consider approval of a lot split located at 1005 Southwest 4th Street. Application by Revival for Christ Club.
Vice Mayor and Council, the property at 1,005 Southwest 4th Street currently has two structures on the same lot. There's the church building on the east portion, and then there's a secondary building that is used as a gym to the west of that structure. The applicant wants to split the secondary structure from the church property. The property is Zone C3, and both of the new lots, if approved, do meet all of the C3 requirements. Staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So they plan to sell the auxiliary building?
That's what my understanding is.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item carries, thank you. Now we will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 13 is the consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held November 2nd, 2020. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020, 2021 in the amount of $760,492.37.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We had a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item carries. Item number 14, consider awarding a contract to BRB Contractors, Inc. in the amount of $6,806,000 base bid scheduled for construction of the southeast lift station improvements, and authorize the chairman and secretary to execute the contract.
Mr. Trustee and Chairman and trustees, on October 27th, we opened bids for the Moore Southeast Lift Station Improvements. We received bids from five contractors. Those bids range from a low bid of $6,806,000 to a high bid of $10,627,113. BRB Contractors of Topeka, Kansas is the low-responsive bidder for the base bid, as I said, for $6,806,000, which includes a channel monster. Basically, that's a grinder that helps grind up any heavier material that comes through and provides a longer life for your pumps. BRB Contractors is an experienced contractor and is fully capable of completing the lift station project. They had previously done a $19 million project with the same engineer that we had used for the design of the project, and it was a very successful project that they had with them. Staff recommends that Moore Public Works Authority award the southeast lift station improvements project to BRB Contractors, Inc. for the base bid amount of $6,806,000, which does include the channel monster, and authorize the chairman and secretary to execute the agreement. The contract time is 400 calendar days. That's without any weather days. We anticipate maybe 15% on weather days, which would be approximately 15 months for construction that we're estimating. The funding source for the project, I believe, comes from a 2014 GO bond that is paying back a loan from the Water Resources, a low-interest loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board.
Is it, is it normal for the bids to vary that much on the contractual basis?
Especially during these times with the COVID. We would, I would anticipate maybe a 20%, maybe max, and this was a little larger. You know, the high bid of $10,606,000 was probably 10% higher than the next highest bid.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. Item carries, thank you. And just FYI, Leadership Moore, if you've never been to the sanitary plant, it's pretty fascinating. It's a $50 million facility. Encourage you to go out there and check it out, just go before lunch. But it's pretty, it's pretty interesting how all of that works. Okay, thank you. We'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 15 is the consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held November 2nd, 2020. Approve and ratify the claims and expenditures for FY 2020, 2021 in the amount of $215,270.84.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And we had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Louie Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Camp?
Yes. Item carries. Now we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Vice, would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hahn?
Here.
Lynn Lewis? Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Camp?
Here.
Louie Williams?
Here.
Item 17 is consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held October 19th, 2020. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. It's consent docket. Please call the roll.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.[1726.45]
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?